Alright, so welcome to our first sound hall for Ream in 2025 and Happy New Year. I feel like the holidays came and went very quickly, but we're gonna get into it. So, our agenda today, we are going to do a comics tutorial, which is our new feature that we're gonna be launching very soon. We're gonna do a 2024 review, which is basically all the features that are major that we added, that can help you, survey results, upcoming features, and then a Q and A at the end. Okay, we have our new feature comics. We have a, it's about a 10-minute pre-recorded video that you guys can watch. So if you're not interested in viewing the comics or seeing anything about the feature, feel free to jump out and jump back in in about 10-15 minutes, which is when we'll get back into the overall bigger presentation. But Sean, who is our CTO, recorded something for us and he wanted us to share it, so. Let's see.
Hello, I'm Sean and I'm going to be showing you the comic book feature that I've been working on for a while now. So there are two ways to add a comic book. One is to add a completely new comic book that is not linked to an existing story. And you do that by clicking the begin button on the add a new story card and then clicking the create button. You can also add to an existing, which links your comic book to an existing ebook. So if you click that, you'll be able to select which story you want to link it to. And then there's another way to link it as well. You can go to the story card that you want to link your comic book to. In this case, we can see that this is an ebook because it has the ebook icon attached to the card. I'm gonna click the vertical meatball menu here and then I'm gonna click add media type. And then it says I already have an ebook attached, but I can't add an audio or comic. I'm gonna add a comic. Now you can see here, all this information is already filled out because it's getting it from the ebook. The information that I need to fill out is the comic book cover and the artist. You don't have to fill out your artists or provide your artist credits, but I'm sure they would appreciate that. So I'm gonna add my cover, which is just a blank image, and these are the same dimensions as the ebook. And then I'm gonna add myself as an artist. And I'm gonna hit the enter key. You can also click this icon here. And then you can select what kind of role they had, right? If you don't know what those roles are, you can click the help me button and it will explain what each one of those roles are. So I'm gonna submit and it adds it to the list. If you click on this, it gives you a reminder of what this artist did. And you can also remove them. And then you can add more if you want. So I'm gonna go ahead and click the save and continue button. So now this story has a comic book attached to it. So we're gonna add some episodes to this. One, two, three. So we now have three episodes. So let's go to episode one and start uploading some images. I'm gonna load, I'm gonna load in six images of varying colors. So there we go. And you see in this readout explains which image is being loaded and a, you know, progress bar. Yours may take a little bit longer depending upon your internet connection, but mine's complete. In addition to that, if your, if your images have any problems while they're uploading, there will be a problems readout, very similar to how audio works. So some of the problems that you may encounter are perhaps you didn't upload the correct file type. We support JPG, PNG, AVIF, and WebP. I suggest using AVIF or WebP. The reasoning for this is because AVIF and WebP have superior compression capabilities without quality loss. And that's important because the better the compression is, the faster your images are going to load on your reader's device. And that keeps your readers happier. It's also very important for mobile devices. Mobile devices typically have poorer network quality and stability. So having that better compression on your images will ensure that all of your users are able to download the images as quickly as possible. In addition, we have a maximum dimension of 800 pixels by 1280 pixels. And if you, if your image does not meet these requirements, you're gonna see that pop up in the problems menu that I was telling you about earlier. So the reason why, again, why we do this is so that the images load as quickly as possible, especially on mobile devices. And I go through that, we explain that here in this paragraph. That's just a regurgitation of what I just said. And then we give some additional recommendations. You don't have to follow these, but they may help you find success on the platform. So some of the other features that we have here is reordering. So for example, I can grab this magenta box and I can put it up here and it's now reordered it. We can also insert another image anywhere in here at any index. So I'm gonna insert another magenta box right here. So insert to the left, select my box, and there we go. It's now inserted. You can also insert at the bottom again by dropping or uploading, clicking this upload files button. And then you can also delete images. So I'm gonna delete this one. So that's how deleted. And then another feature that we have is alternate text. So you can show the alternate text fields by clicking this checkbox. And then the alternate text input fields will display under each one of your images. So if you don't know what alternate text is, you can click this little icon here and it'll explain what it is, but I'll give you a quick rundown. So some people are blind and they can't see images. So in order for you to convey what, what, what your images have on them to the blind, you can use alternate text. Whatever you input into your alternate text is going to be read to your, the people who are blind and they're using the site or web app. And so let me just go ahead and type something in for this. So this is, this is a magenta box. So you can hit enter, you can click the button. So once this is filled out and the blind person is using their e-reader, it will read this text to them. And that's important. We highly suggest that you use the alternate text for those folks. So we also give you some tips for writing good alternate text. You don't have to fill it out, but again, we do highly suggest it. It's important that those with disabilities are able to enjoy your comic book. Alright, so let's go to episode two and we're gonna upload a couple more images, just three this time. So there we go. We have some more, we have some more images. I'm gonna hide that. And then I'm gonna go to episode three and I'm gonna upload some more images again. So now all three of our episodes have images. Right? But let's say I'm on episode one and I grabbed the episode link using the copy episode link button here. I, as the author, can view the comic book. But if I share this link with anyone, no one else but me is going to be able to see it because this comic book is currently not published. So in order to publish, we need to go to the publishing tab. Now this is very similar to the ebook and the audiobook publisher. You can create schedules, you can view your episode list, you can publish now for a specific episode, you can queue all for your schedules, or you can publish all. So I'm gonna publish all of these into my test tier four. And then you can see that the publishing records have automatically updated, so they're published. And this is now gonna be visible to people who pay. You can obviously also publish to followers or you can give it away for free. Whatever you'd like to do. So I'm gonna get that link now. I'm gonna copy my episode link. So here we are, we're on the comic book e-reader. Right? So at the top, we can see the title of the story and then we can see the title of the episode. And this is episode three. And then underneath that, you can see your Ream page name. And if the user clicks on that, that will take them to your Ream page so that way they can see all of your other content. And if we scroll down, we can see all the images that are uploaded. In this case, there's only three for episode three. At any point, if the user thinks to themselves, oh, I've already read this episode, they can click the TOC button here at the top and they can navigate to another episode. So I'll navigate to episode two and that works. And down at the bottom, there's another button for the table of contents. And this is done so that as the user is scrolling, the header disappears to give them more room to see what they're looking at. And if they reach the bottom, that header might not be there. So to alleviate some of that confusion, there's a little table of contents button at the bottom. So they can click that and it'll just show the table of contents button. And the currently selected episode will have a little purple circle next to it, just to denote that. And that episode won't be clickable. They'll be able to click a different episode. Now, some of the navigation controls that we have here are the left and right navigation. So that will allow you to navigate to the episode that is to the left and the episode that is to the right. And it gives a little the title there and a tooltip. The users can also comment and you can comment. So I'll say, hope you enjoy. Post that and there we go, the comment's added. So I'm gonna go to episode one using that navigation link and there you go. There's episode one, which has a few more panels than the other episodes. Now, what about mobile? So I'll go ahead and show you what that looks like on mobile. So the, as with everything else, this is mobile responsive. If for some reason you want to submit your, your comic book on a mobile device, that's also mobile responsive. Everything is, the entire site is mobile responsive. So this particular screen size is an iPhone SE, which is a smaller and cheaper iPhone screen size. And we can comment. This is episode one, which doesn't have any comments. So let's go to episode two that had the comments. I'll click on that and it shows the comment. I'm gonna comment again. Hello. So we can comment on the phone. It shows the number of comments. Let's, let's search for this comic book. So this comic book is a fantasy action. Its main genre is fantasy and its sub-genre is action. So let's search for action. So my, there's my comic book. I'm gonna click on it and it pops up with everything here. Look at all those content warnings. Oh God. Okay. Here, we're going to view the artist credits and it just shows what each person did. Pretty simple. And yeah, that's, that's comic books. I hope you guys enjoy.
Alright, I'm gonna go on to our next review. I hope you guys enjoyed that. We're gonna be talking, we'll talk and answer more questions about comics specifically. And I know you guys are really, really interested in images and ebooks and that is coming. So feel free to drop all of your comments inside of our little comment chat that we have going on. But I'm going to continue and we're going to go on to the major features added in 2024. Super excited, you guys. I just wanted to do a review on this because I realized in a couple of our surveys that some people didn't know we had certain things. So one of the biggest features we had added in 2024, I think it was September, October, maybe November, was EPUB importer. We had a Google Drive integration with, you know, with Google to help you bring over your Google docs. But now we have an EPUB importer and you just link out to your EPUB and it will import it completely for you in there. Next, we have member analytics. So you can now see a whole bunch of analytics for your members. And I have just a list over here about what exactly you'll see. And you can see your member analytics if you go into the members tab on your dashboard. And there, in the members tab, there is a members analytics like sub-tab. You'll be able to see your average revenue per customer, the number of new followers in the last three days, the number of new subscribers in the last three days, monthly recurring revenue as well as engagement. So this is something authors asked for. You get to see your top commenters, your top three, how many comments they've left in the past 30 days, which is really cool. We also have story analytics. So these show up on your story card, your story summary card, and you'll be able to see the number of comments as well as the total reads for your story. And eventually, we don't have this yet, but eventually we'll be able to break that down for you by like number of views per chapter. So you can see where people are dropping off. Next, we have exit surveys. So you can also find exit surveys in your member analytics tab. It's at the bottom. It basically shows the total number of unsubscribers. And if they chose to fill out the exit survey, it's optional, so they don't have to. But if they did, it gives you reasons why they, they left or why they unsubscribed. And sometimes they leave comments too for you. Next, we have audio. We did a little bit of a, audio is still in beta right now as we iron out the last few bugs for it, but we did a, our last sound hall, we had a feature review of audio. So if you haven't checked it out, I highly suggest checking it out because we have readers on the platform looking for audio. And it's also a social audio player, so readers can comment on each individual chapter too. Next, we have discovery filters. You can find discovery filters if you go to the search bar on Ream. So there's a little search bar on the top right-hand corner if you're using your phone. And that specifically has ways where you can designate which genres you don't want to see. So a lot of people who, readers and authors didn't want to see, for example, let's say romance. Romance is very prevalent, one of the top genres on Ream. But these readers, these authors weren't interested in seeing romance. So you can now basically say, hey, I don't wanna see it. You can also get rid of content warnings if you don't want to see certain, certain content warnings. You could designate which intended audience you want to read for. So if you want to read adult books only, you can designate that. Language too. So we don't have localization yet, but we do have the ability for authors to designate their books as English, for example, or French, or German, whatever it might be. So readers who read in other languages can now say, hey, I only want to see German books and only German books will come up in search. And then last big thing that we added for discovery filters was being able to hide mature content. And this was really important for a lot of readers and authors on the platform. Just so, you know, if people are not interested in mature content, they won't see it. And how we do this is authors have to designate their content as mature or not mature. So if they don't designate their book as mature, it will show up under the, you know, not mature section. And if you guys are seeing mature books that are not properly marked as mature, you guys, we have an ability to report books now as well. So just something there. Ability to pause your page is another feature we added. So this is, so readers will not get charged when you need to take a break. You can pause your page under the page tab. Multiple languages, like I said before, we don't have localization, but we do have the ability for authors to designate their books as certain languages. And then we have some very general e-reader improvements that help readers find you and your page and your book easier. Okay, let's go into our marketing efforts that we're carrying in from 2024 to 2025. We have a Ream raids. We did our first one in August because of the holidays and, you know, everything that happened towards the end of last year. I think we had like the elections, Thanksgiving, Christmas, you know. We decided to push the next one to, I think the next Ream raid is in February. Correct me if I'm wrong. So that will be coming up soon. We also have Remy the Cat socials that we launched. And if, if you don't know, Remy is our little mascot. You can see her on the page here. And she has a Instagram, TikTok threads and Twitter. So she's posting book recommendations for readers. We also have Remy Rex. So Remy Rex is a newsletter curated by our team or by Remy. And it's curated out by genre and we send newsletter blast basically once a month to readers of those genres who are looking for specific books. And then we also have the ability for authors to create author swaps and collaborate with other authors on Ream. Okay, next we have education efforts. So education is really important to me and for the team because we want to see you guys succeed on the platform and in your businesses, just in general as authors. So we're launching a bunch of free education. You can find this on Ream Academy on Ream. So reamstories.com/reamacademy. And we also have an Instagram, YouTube that we are starting. It's also, you can find that on Ream Academy. We have blog posts. A new place is info.reamstories.com/blog. You can find all the longer form content there. Subscriptions for authors, Facebook group. And then our Ream Facebook page, which is gonna tell you guys about the team a little bit and the new features we're launching and the new features that are coming up. And then Ream Stories on YouTube is eventually going to have tutorials. So you'll see those in the next month or two. Okay, so last thing before we get into the Q and A. We did a survey for authors and readers on our platform specifically for, you know, features they liked, features they didn't like and how we can improve as a company. So let's get into that. We're gonna start with what readers like and then we'll get into frustrations or what readers and authors like. So readers and authors really liked the ease of use and simple navigation on the platform, that direct interaction with authors, exclusive and early content. They're a huge fan of that. They enjoy the support we have for authors or you as authors might also enjoy that. I hope you do. The diverse uncensored content, community features like commenting and interaction as well as popular genres, top authors and stories that we've added onto the platform. Okay, next, let's get into some frustrations that readers and authors have about Ream right now. And then we're gonna talk about how we're gonna fix them. So search is a big frustration that people have. Specifically, people have difficulty finding specific authors and stories that they like. They also have a, kind of like along with that, readers specifically have mentioned that it's very difficult to preview stories on the platform because a lot of the content is behind paywalls. So we have a couple of solutions. And just to kind of preface all this, all the new features we're gonna be adding soon. These are features that we're going to be working on throughout the year. So it might not happen immediately. It's not gonna happen tomorrow. But we're going to continuously be working on these features to improve them for readers and authors. So solutions for search. We're gonna be improving the search algorithm on, on the backend. Reworking toggling. So toggling is where you basically say, hey, I want to search directly for an author or for a specific book or audiobook. We're going to play with how we can make that easier for you guys. So it's, yeah. And then we are also thinking about the idea of requiring a specific number of chapters to be free in order for you to participate in like the discovery algorithm on the platform. And this isn't like, you don't have to do this, but we're going to highly, once this comes, once we roll this feature out, we're going to highly suggest that you have at least one, one or two chapters free so readers can preview your work. And this is similar to Amazon and I think Amazon and all of the retailers, they have 5% of your book is free or previewable before somebody buys it. And again, this isn't going to be a required thing if you want to have your book be able to be searched more and found more in discovery. Having at least a little bit of a preview for readers is kind of essential. But I'll give you guys more information as we get closer to that point. And I'm happy to chat and kind of, kind of brainstorm to how we can help you with search in the Q and A. Okay, next we have discovery. One of the big issues for authors was the over-representation of the same author specifically in like the banner section on desktop. So something that we've done, I think it was in December or November of last year, is we refresh that. Those specific banners, I think with, I think it was like 10 or 20 new authors. So we're gonna continuously do that. Probably once a quarter, you'll get new fresh authors on those banners. Another solution that we have for readers is creating genre-specific pages. So right now you can search in the search bar, hey, I want to see romance. We are thinking about creating like, maybe like a tab here. Here's like the romance books. And we may add a ranking system to that. So we can say, hey, this is the top, the top vampire romance book right now. And you'll get like a number one or a number two or whatever your book is ranked. We don't have that fleshed out, but that is something that we're working on fleshing out quarter one, quarter two of this year. And then we're also thinking about implementing a free slash follower section for readers. So again, readers can discover those books before deciding, hey, I want to pay for a membership. Okay, next one, we have payments. So payments, this is two issues. Lack of annual subscription and then payment and flexibility for people who don't want to use credit cards or debit cards. I know a few of you who live in Europe specifically have brought this to my attention that a lot of people in Europe don't use credit cards. They use different, different ways of paying. So we're currently exploring those alternate payment solutions. So I don't have a specific update for you right now, but that is something we are working towards this year as well as adding annual subscriptions. We have a bunch of bigger features coming later this year. I don't know if I'll tell you guys about them today, but you've probably heard a little bit about them through the grapevine. And along with those, we will add annual subscriptions in there. Okay, next we have metadata. So we already have tons of metadata on Ream, but we're going to add even more. One of them is series. You're gonna be able to group your books into series and create a series description, all that good stuff. Another is completion status. So this is saying like, hey, my book is ongoing, it's complete. We also are going to be adding if it's a free or paid book. If it's exclusive to Ream, you might get a little ribbon. We've talked about that. And a few more labels to kind of designate your book and make it more easy for readers to find it. Okay, commenting, this is a big one. I know when, the issue here is when authors edit specific chapters, they lose those comments for their chapters and that is not a good experience. And so right after comics, we're actually going to be diving right into images and ebooks, which we'll get to in a second. But after images and ebooks, we're going to be fixing that comment, comment stuff. So basically, we're going to have it so we, you guys can keep the comments when you edit your content or when you edit that specific chapter. So that is coming very, very soon. Next, images and ebooks. This is something that you guys wanted a lot. The ability to add images inside of your ebooks instead of a comic book as well as adding images into your, like, so if you have images in your community posts, once they get sent, those community post notifications get sent through email to your readers. You want your readers to be able to see the images in their email. And so that is something we are going to be working on next, right after comics. Okay, last thing, a last big frustration is our, our app. So a lot of authors and and some readers don't like that we don't have an app in the App Store. And we do have an app, it's a PWA, which is a progressive web app, if I'm correct, Sean. But this is downloaded directly from your browser. There's a few different reasons why we don't have an app in the App Store. One, it would have, it would cost a lot more development time, which means we wouldn't be able to put it, put out features as often or as many as we can, since we only have Sean as our single developer. Next, we have a lot of spicy romance authors on the platform and some TOS do not allow that type of content on their App Store. So we have, we're very cognizant about that, as we want to create a space for all authors to be able to host their stuff. And then also, the app stores usually take thirty percent cut of all the transactions that go through it. So, basically, if you're selling a subscription for ten dollars, the App Store is going to take three dollars away from you, so you're left with seven dollars instead of that ten. And then platform fees come now and our payment processing fees come out and it just basically will cut into your profits a lot, having that app on the App Store. So. In the meantime, as we come up with a better solution, we are just going to make the app easier to use, the, the PWA that we have, and make it feel more app-like. And so that includes adding push notifications and other smaller features to, you know, make it feel, make it feel a little bit more homey. Okay. I think this is the last slide before the Q and A. So, some of our upcoming features, I'll just go through these quickly. We have images and ebooks and emails, like I mentioned. Commenting within ebook improvements. We're going to be adding direct messaging soon. A lot of authors have been asking for the ability to message their readers directly on the platform instead of their email. And one of the features we're going to be adding towards, I want to say like Q2, Q3, is the ability to add libraries, so readers can organize their books that they're reading. They can make specific, you know, libraries for specific books. And, yeah, it'll just be able to help them keep track a lot more. Next, we have discovery improvements, like we mentioned, the free stories, exclusive stories, ribbons, rankings, all that fun stuff. Let's see if I have anything extra. I think that is it. These upcoming, there's going to be more features than this coming this year. And these are just the main ones that we're focusing on specifically in the beginning of the year. So. Let's go into the Q and A. I have one question that was sent in through email and then we can dive into the questions in the comments. So. The question was, as part of your plan to offer comics, will there be a way for authors to connect with author, our artists to propose possible team-ups? Right now, we do not have that. That's something we would definitely be interested in exploring in the future. Probably twenty twenty-six-ish, twenty twenty-seven. But if you have, if you know any comic artists or comic creators who are interested in using Ream as their place to host their comic, definitely send them over. And yeah, I'm going to stop sharing so I can see the comments. Alright. Bear with me as I, as I read through all these. Okay. And you're free to, to add your comments and questions into here now. Can we get to meet Bobby? She's so good at support, that's so cute. She's in here, if you haven't met her yet. Anika said, the member analytics still showing money for members who receive free memberships via promo codes is misleading. And we can actually, I'll write that down. And we can take a look at that and see if we can change that up. So it will show, specifically, like, who, who, maybe how many people have used their promo code? And possibly remove that from the monthly recurring revenue. Oh, code for... Oh, Bobby already wrote that down. Look at her go. Include audiobooks in the banners too. And so, the banners that I was talking about are author pages. We can play with the idea of adding specific ebooks or audiobooks or comic books into those banners too. They might show up a little better in a different way. Maybe in different discovery ways instead of the page banners, but I'll take that back to the team and we can brainstorm a little bit. Is there a bookstore feature coming where we can upload and sell full ebooks? Which is like, just one-time sales for readers who don't want monthly subscriptions? Yes, there is. That is going to be coming up probably middle of this year, as we knock out, before we knock out all of, or after we knock out all of those, these, the smaller features that we just went over. So yes, you are going to be able to sell your books at, like, in a la carte format. So, one-time sales. So readers come in, purchase specific book for a specific amount of money. And yeah, so yes, that's coming. So, Laura says that she's seeing, she turned off, turned off erotica slash fantasy, yet I still see over ten erotica in the beginning. So this could be, there could be a variety of reasons for this. Probably the biggest one is people did not categorize their books correctly. And so if you see a book like that, please let us know and we can review it and we can make sure that it's categorized in the correct genre that it is. But we can also do negative filtering too, which we have for primary genres. We might be able to add it for secondary and third genres too. Ah, okay, so Anika for the, the the Rising Dreamers, we can add. So I'm just gonna say discovery on homepage to feature other media types. Okay. We can totally do that. We might even have like a, a section that we have specifically for audio, specifically for comics, moving forward. And we do plan on adding one more media type, at, at least one more media type this year. More towards like the end of the year, or middle to end of the year. So, that's something we can do too. Okay, do you guys have any other questions for me? Laura, I would, I would suggest if you see something like that, to reach out, or I believe we can report books now on the platform, so. Definitely, if you can. Yes, of course. Oh, thank you so much. I really appreciate all you guys joining and asking questions and staying for the comic section. I know Sean was super excited for that too. I keep deleting these. And if you guys ever need anything, support@reamstories.com, you can email us. Bobby is our support lead, so you'll probably be talking to her. So, yeah, we're really excited about this year, this quarter especially, and next quarter when we start to add some one-time sales. I'm really excited for that. And yeah, if you guys have any questions, you can bring them to support@reamstories.com. This specific presentation is going to be uploaded to our YouTube at Ream Stories. So you'll be able to re-watch it if you're interested. Other than that, I hope you guys have a, let me see, okay. I think I answered everything. I, I hope you guys have an amazing start to your 2025. I hope you knock out all those goals and write a lot of books and just have fun. So. Yeah, thank you guys for coming.